Call and order this meeting of the Plain Township Board of Trustees for Tuesday, August 12, 2014. If everyone will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before us we have the agenda as presented. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections by fellow board members or department heads?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to add under... Certain properties, I would like to put, I don't want to have the address of the property, but I think everybody's aware of the property on Snyder Road.
Okay. Do we have any other additions, deletions, or corrections? Okay, the agenda will stand as amended, and at this point, we will go to the Sheriff's Report. Pardon me. Sheriff's Report, first thing we have is speeding on End Row.
So I'll turn that over to Mr. Iasino.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, over the past couple months, some residents have been coming into my office requesting the speed buggy be put out on End Row between 30th Street and basically 34th Street, it was in the backside of Walmart there, and we put the speed buggy out there, I'm going to say about a month ago, we also did last week, and I have that for you. They say every time we put it out there, everybody slows down, but when it's not out there, they come, turn it on 30th Street, just flying.
Which happens everywhere in the township, no matter where the buggies go.
They were supposed to come here tonight, I don't know if they could make it, I told them. So, if we can get some presents out there, you know, whenever they can, I guess that would help, but we're really having that.
As far as, of course, have that bill put on the shift, the shift commander, the sheriff's report, just to do an extra patrol for that area.
Is there anything else related to speeding on End Row that we need to touch upon? Do we have anybody in the crowd that wishes to address the sheriff's office with any concerns specifically? Okay, that'll close out our sheriff's report, and then take that, turn it over now to Detective Conick for the detective's report.
Thank you. We have the July 2014 monthly report, and also it'll be compared with what we did in July of 2013. We had 869 calls for service, which was a 15.4% increase from what we did the same time last year. We had 51 crashes, nine crashes with injury, 118 alarms, which was a 12% increase. For the month of July, we conducted 260 traffic stops. It's a huge increase from last July, but we also had township units that assisted with the shield detail, and we also had two sobriety checkpoints, so that those numbers were a little inflated just based on those three extra details. Eighty-nine citations, 36 arrests with 18 bookings and 18 summonses. We were also able to look at how we've been doing on Firestone Road, and that was a concern in the past. We had 47 traffic stops with 24 citations, just for July on that, on that road. And for my activity, did 14 follow-up cases, 14 follow-up investigation with seven closed cases. But from here, I think this point forward, I'll be able to present everyone with, at the minimum, our calls for service, now that we, you know, July 2013 is when we started doing this and presenting this to the board, so, you know, throughout the rest of the year, and, you know, from this point forward, I'll be able to let you know how we compare to the previous year. That's, you know, we'll be able to go through August and September and all the way through and say, at the very minimum, if there's something more that you're interested in number-wise, that we can kind of chart out, I'll be more than happy to do so. I think at the very minimum, you know, our calls for service is just an overall, how we've been doing for the, for the month, and kind of compare that.
This is definitely really good information, I mean, to visualize it, quantify, be able to communicate this, obviously, with our constituents is critical. I think, maybe as we move forward outside of just comparing, say, July 13 to July 14, if we can ultimately even just get like a quarterly snapshot, quarterly snapshot of, say, July, August, September, and then, say, October, November, December, and then we can even compare like a year over year, but obviously, we're working towards that, so, you just bar chart it out, see, you know, 13 versus 14 and so, so forth. And that's something we can publish, you know, through our social media, through our website, so, obviously, inquisitive minds or folks that wish to be informed will, will take a quick look, you know, okay, these are our hot points.
Are these, Kate, that say, Kate, you have a follow-up investigation, then you say it's closed cases, are those cases that have been resolved, solved, and these people have been?
Yes. They've either been just flat-out closed out, or closed out with, with an arrest, in the way of conviction.
I mean, I don't know if that's something we could, you know, we're lucky we have a detective, not, not everybody gets to have a detective in their town, but maybe something on there to show our residents that, you know, through your follow-up investigations, you have, you have solved...
Fifty percent.
You've solved the crimes, they've, they've now been in jail, I think, I don't know, there's something you could do, maybe throw that out, let these people see what you've done, because we're lucky, not everybody has a detective.
We could, yeah, I mean, I could put in, you know, what, like, the types, the nature of the cases, you know, what's, a couple of...
Actually, to take it even a step further, I mean, I think the venue, much to be, your views on this is dedicated space in the new...
I agree, in the newsletter.
In the newsletter, Sheriff's Office corner, really talking about the budget for that region.
It kind of says a message out there, township, that, hey, we got a detective out there, and he's going to find it, and we're going to solve these crimes, and we're going to put the individuals who are causing, we're going to put them in the place they need to be.
Yeah, I can throw that in there.
You're putting work in, too, we might as well make sure these hands get in.
Very good.
Nice work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
You have a second, I saw it here outside the sheriff's report, anyone to speak to as well, or is that just someone?
Yeah, I mean, tomorrow, at Samantha's, we're going to be doing Coffee with the Cop, and I'll be there with Sheriff Meyer, and it's open to the public, so, anybody and everybody is, is welcome to attend, and I think it'll be from 08 to 10:00 in the morning.
Are you guys buying breakfast for people?
I, I can, if you'd like. I'll throw that out there.
Black coffee.
Just a coffee and a napkin.
Standing in line for coffee.
See you there.
And that gets more people in the door.
I'll see you there. I'll have a lot of breakfast tomorrow.
Be careful, he'll show up. Thanks, Bill.
Yeah.
That closes out our detective's reports, going to take us to unfinished business, I'm going to turn that over to Mrs. Campbell.
Thank you, I have a resolution in front of the Board of Trustees, whereas the Plain Township Board of Trustees have held a public hearing on July 22, 2014, for the 2015 Plain Township Alternative Tax Budget, and whereas the Plain Township Board of Trustees continued the hearing on the 2015 Plain Township Alternative Tax Budget until the August 12, 2014 meeting, now therefore be it hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to adopt the 2015 Alternative Tax Budget for Plain Township, as presented and to authorize the Plain Township Fiscal Officer to submit two copies of this budget to the Stark County Auditor on or before August 20, 2014.
I will so move on unfinished business number one. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Mr. Leeta?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
Item number two is a resolution by the Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize the purchase of flooring materials from K Carpet and Red Gallery for the Township Hall remodeling project, not to exceed 9,100, and authorize payment from Fund 01B05D.
So, move, second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Leeta?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
And that's the end of unfinished business.
Okay, we'll move on to new business, I'm going to keep that with Ms. Campbell.
Thank you. Item number one is the Fulton Road storm sewer project, and I would like to introduce and turn that over to Dave Torrance from the Stark County Engineers' Office.
Thanks, Lisa, Board members, thank you for inviting me up to this meeting today. I just wanted to give you a quick update on the Fulton relief storm sewer project we've been working on together. Our office, I think Gary Connor from our Hydraulics Department came to this meeting maybe two years ago, Joe, does that sound right?
Two years.
Yeah. The Fulton relief storm sewer project is a storm sewer job we've been working on with, with your board, and also with the Jackson Township Board of Trustees. The storm sewer project starts roughly at the intersection of Hills and Dales in Whipple. It's about a six-foot, seven-foot diameter storm sewer, and travels north along Whipple for a few hundred feet, then goes back behind Grinders and back in the old Protecto area, kind of that triangle between Fulton, Hills and Dales, and then goes straight north across the St. Michael's parking lot, underneath Fulton Road, across the St. Michael's parking lot, and then crosses, what, Joe, 34th, 36th Street, a couple of township roads, maybe St. Michael's Boulevard, and then outlets just north of 38th Street. As part of our last Hills and Dales widening project, our office had done a lot of the storm sewer work upstream of there, but this is an outlet sewer that also drains part of, I guess, the Avondale area, it would be...
Down by the school.
Down by the Avondale School, right, that kind of thing.
We had an extension fight there years ago.
Exactly. So what we've got is about, it's probably about a 60-year-old storm sewer, again, six or seven feet in diameter. We have applied a couple of different times for OPWC funding, Ohio Public Works Commission funding. Overall, it's about a $2 million project, and the county commissioners are putting money into it, our office is putting some money into it, and we'd approached both the Jackson Township Board of Trustees and yourselves about a commitment up to about $150,000. I think in the past, the board has been favorable on that, so Joe asked me just to kind of come in and update you on the status of the project, and give you an update on the funding. We're going to make some changes to the application to try to get some more points, we're going to look at an OPWC loan to get this funded, that's something, that's a burden that our office and the commissioners would talk about, we wouldn't ask the township, either Jackson or Plain Township, to be involved in a loan, but essentially, what we're hoping is that you'll keep your commitment up to $150,000 for the project. We should know in November if we're successful getting that project funded, and then can talk about, you know, funding details at that point. If we do get the project funded, it would go to construction end of the year 2015, with hopefully a commitment from, from the townships in, in sometime in $2,016. So, again, it's about a $2 million project, storm sewer itself is 60 to 70 years old, six, seven feet in diameter, I think the outlet pipe, Joe, I believe, is a 90-inch pipe, so it's a pretty big area, and I think, I believe it affects roughly 1,200 homes that are drained, between Plain Township and Jackson Township, all the township roads and areas in the town. So, with that, I just appreciate you taking the time. If you have any questions for me on that project, I'd be more than happy to answer.
So, since you were being asked to hold up 7% of the project, but yet, what's it going to have, from a funding aspect, budget-wise, Lisa, Joe, what's...
Well, Joe certainly doesn't have the money. If he passes, if the levy passes, those are types of, those are projects that, that he could start having funding towards, because, you know, if his levy would pass, essentially all of his money could go to paving, but that just can't happen, because he's got trucks that are 20 years old, and one truck costs $140,000. But essentially, he'll have around $300,000 that could be set aside for projects like this, so he, he would have money, but the general fund does have money to set aside for this project in the meantime.
Essentially, what I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, is the money wouldn't be due until 16th?
Correct.
We could budget appropriate percents on that aside.
Yeah.
Had it into next year as well as, or this year as well as, had it into next year.
Majority of this project, to me, benefits township residents. Businesses that we've had flooded up, Protecto, behind Grinders, we've had several storms, the cars were under all those back there, down by Avondale School, we've had several flooding, but this, this will help really, while that, safe nights area. Now, we went over on 38th Street, if you remember correctly, last fall, I think, when resident, this is where all this ends up going, so...
Would we, would we say that, that we have our priorities, that this one definitely over tops?
This one's been on the books for 15 years.
Yeah, since before I started, it was on the books.
I thought this was one of our priorities.
And let me say, too, this is, this is another phase of the project, this would be the ultimate downstream end. We also have a project we're working on just a little bit upstream of there, in the Avondale area, a little closer to the school and back into that neighborhood there, so, once we get this project funded, we'll, we'll send funding for that project.
We have problems there, too, in our basements, yeah.
Personally, I'm speaking on my own behalf, I would be in full support of continuing to...
I appreciate that. Yeah, and like I said, when, once we, we'll fill out the application, applications we're due in September, we'll know sometime in November it's funded, and then we can sit down and formally discuss.
Perfect. And hopefully Joe's levy passed and that money that is...
We need a little money for my lift for the project, I think.
Yeah, we need, we need a lift for the project.
I know you're, it's, both the projects are in similar situations, I know you guys have submitted that a couple of times, and we've worked with you a little bit on that, and that hasn't been able to get funding.
I guess, I guess why you are here, I can't go on the record now, and praise you guys, we're getting a lot of praise on that 55th Street Bridge.
Yeah.
It's been overwhelmingly people telling me how pleased they are with the whole outcome, so, I should have said this a couple weeks ago, but up here now, and I'm saying, it came out really nice, great job.
I appreciate that. Long time coming, but it was...
Especially with that turn, especially with that turn lane, pretty...
Right.
I think it's...
Yeah, only just one of those...
It's been so nice.
And I know for the residents over there in Canterbury Creek, they're all ecstatic. Now, I mean, it seemed like a tumultuous long period of time, but when you put it into the perspective that actually, it was scheduled for another year out, technically they voted the fact that money got pulled in, the whole nine yards...
If they had a temporary bridge to use, that thing would have been closed.
Right, yeah, it was, it was a bad set of circumstances.
I said temporary, if you follow that first, Canterbury, you lined it up.
It is. Never know where you might see that.
Sure.
No, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks so much for coming tonight.
Thanks, David.
Thank you, Dave.
All right, item number two are the false alarms.
I was going to do my new business, too.
Second, discussion, roll call. We have to discussion before roll call.
Question again. Warner Cable?
I actually had a phone call with Warner Cable, and talked to them, and it's an issue with, that they are actively addressing having meetings on, and taking care of in-house, so, they know that they have an issue.
Well, they should, because for years and years and years, I mean, numbers...
I know, and we're having conversations back and forth actively.
Because every time that goes off, we send two officers...
Two officers now, I know. Yeah, we are having active conversations regularly, to try to resolve it.
If we're discussing, roll call.
Mr. Leeta?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
Item number three, I would like to have Rob Skolmich come up and discuss the, just for discussion only, the importance in consideration of a new generator at the Township Hall.
Well, this is something Lisa had been working on for quite a while here, and involved with the chief, too, when the fire department moved over the building. Our current generator has been in a state of disrepair for several years, we actually, we actually got estimates several years ago, and it was so high, we budgetarily, we kind of held off as long as we could, but we're at a state now where we really can't wait much longer, so we've been in the process of talking to, through several electricians and several providers, and we think we're getting a handle on what we need here. What we would like to do, the current generator is a 10 kilowatt, which only powered the old radiator room when the fire was here. We have a couple outlets for the service over the years, but they can't handle anything else, including the heating and air conditioning, so, we're looking at a solution that will power the entire building, which is, all the departments know, everything we do today, from zoning to finance and everything, depends on our computers and internet, and we were mostly concerned with the longer outage, if we had a several-day outage, like has happened in several parts of the township, we would almost come to a standstill as far as our operations here, so, you know, our recommendation is we try to power the, the whole building here, so that would take around a 45 kilowatt generator.
As I say, I know, outside of high-level discussions that have had in passing, but as well, and at talking with the chief just last week, understand that power, the fact is, is if disaster hits a township, this is sort of like central command outside of, you know, our safety forces, you know, through the sheriff's office, as well as fire EMS, being able to coordinate logistically and so forth, and if this is down, that's totally, that's totally inextricable, because if we can't even respond to our constituents for the sake of...
That's right. Can't get your phones, you can't handle...
Emergency response, whether it's, hey, I can't even get over to your fire, ECM, EMS.
That's right.
And...
Well, I don't think we ever imagined we would be as dependent on computers and internet and technology when they designed this building and the electrical systems, obviously, we've had upgraded several times.
I just know, I don't want to, I don't want to be the trustee or part of the board that ultimately is on the receiving end of residents' complaints that we could, we could respond, providing basic services that were empowered, responsible for delivering, as far as from a next step, next steps aspect, I mean, have you guys actively collected any types of proposals?
Yes, we do have three proposals that we're fine-tuning, and we will have ready for the next meeting, for the board to make a decision, we just didn't want to give you a sticker shot, they're in the range of, well, it's much less than it was last time, because we find two, they're, what would you say, their range is about 32,000?
Around 32,000.
Are these running on, this runs on natural gas or gasoline, natural gas?
Natural gas.
Natural gas.
Just like our current one. However, that was, part of the reason the cost is, is a little high, is, is again, it's a generator over four times the size of what we currently have, and the gas line that we have ran to is not, was not big enough to support the bigger-sized generator, so we'll call some plumbing with some new, new gas lines.
Is there any type of trade-in value, you know, just for the sake, these parts are in, so far, gone?
The engine itself is in fairly good shape, it has very low hours. We had talked about trying to, the chief had talked about trying to reuse it at one of the fire stations, but the people that we've talked to from Generac who make that particular model, the problem with ours is not so much the engine, as much as it is the electronic controls, the transfer switches, the voltage sensors, the voltage regulators, that kind of thing. It was as expensive to buy new controls for that age generator as it was to buy a new one, so, as far as reusing it, I'm not sure it's cost-effective, but we are still trying to pursue that, try, and try to find some use for it.
So ultimately, let's say, this is also something where the gov deals, or something, or, hey, if it's deinstalled, we can table one.
We can always put it out there and see what happens, I mean, anything with it, or it is a bonus. We certainly can, but we will have, I mean, we can put it out there, it doesn't hurt anything, but we certainly will have that proposal at the, at the next meeting. We've gotten three quotes, there's one we think we can fine-tune a little.
If they have a bad generator from an emergency management standpoint, if we have to use a damaged facility for, you know, emergency stop or something like that, I don't know, that might be able to handle, you know, limited electricity in that building.
Yeah, it's a little, it's been powered a fair amount. The biggest problem is, again, that your old start automatically, it still has to be manually started, which again, can, might not be a big problem in some situations, but the, the voltage regulation is fluctuating wildly, so, it's to the point where when it's running, it's still, it won't even power, all of our UPSs are battery backups, they won't even recognize that there's power coming to them, because it's such dirty power, so... To power electronics, anything electronic like our phone system or computers...
I'm just saying, run electricity running, the watch machine, stuff like that, you know.
Yeah, and it very well could have a use for some, I mean, certainly we would look at any possible uses, before we would...
Because if we, if we're in evacuations, kind of, that place is the only facility we have to party, you know, inadequate to comedy, something like that, so...
We still have a little work to do with, like Lisa said, with, with looking at some of the pricing for the gas line change, and I'm working with our roof, our own mechanics as far as comparing the two brands, and with the engine types, and still likely be doing maintenance on it. So we still have a little more labor to do, hopefully the next meeting, maybe we'll have a resolution in front of you to decide on.
Here's your round.
Thank you, Ron. And that, that concludes new business. I'm going to take us to the Fiscal Officer's Report, and I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item on the agenda is a request for a resolution by the board to authorize the payment of the penny warrants in an amount of $103,000, $103.09 as a cash.
Also move, second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeta?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number two is a request for a resolution to authorize the payment of cable, any amount, an amount not to exceed $210,000.
So, move, second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leeta?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number three is a request for a resolution by the board to authorize the payment for the following medical claims, as provided by healthcare.
Move, second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leeta?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number four is the financial report. Fiscal Officer number five is a request for a resolution to authorize the following transfer.
So, move, second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Mr. Leeta?
Yes.
And Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number six is a request for a resolution by the board to authorize the fiscal officer, myself, to request an additional amended certificate of estimated resources from the auditor for the additional revenue of $388,778.74.
So, move, second, discussion, just to clarify, is this because of, you know, is it a collection effort, is it at county level, or because of, you know...
Just, this, most of it's for receipts that aren't anticipated, so, you can see the breakdown there, some is fine money, we have an additional $64,000 in the state tax dollars that came in, the gaming fees for Zillings a big portion of that, because we didn't know what the legislature was going to do, if those were going to get wiped out or not, and so, we had the auction, proceeds auction, a big portion of it, so, just additional amendment that we didn't anticipate at the beginning of the year.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Leeta?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number seven is the, we got notice, which I think I carbon all of the long, filled with email, for the, this is going to be a hotel on Everheart, it's for a new liquor permit. I spoke with Lisa briefly, she did say that it went out to the sheriff's office, and then didn't get confirmation back that there's, there's no issues in that area, it's not near a school, no, loading meets any of the requirements that will allow us to object to the permit being granted, but that's before the board today, it is a new one.
Just a point, one question, I think there was an email that went around, just asking about the area, we may do a note, wonder if this actually, if we'll be back, down for that area, thinking it was dry or something, would we be able to...
Well, I think that's something that we need to check with the board of elections on. Personally, I don't have a problem with the permit, we just need to make sure through the board of elections that the area is actually wet, because I know historically...
I can tell you this from my experience, that the Division of Labor Control is on it, they, they're not sitting back letting people pop up places where they shouldn't be, so if it is, in fact, dry, they'll have to get a site-specific ballot election, it will be on it, and it wasn't on for this time that I'm aware of, on the ballot, so it would be IDMA that they would be looking at, so they've got to get their... So, they've got to get their ducks in a row with the division of liquor control, then they've got to get their stuff into the board of elections.
This is also something that we may want to approach the city camp because of the need agreement we have, because I think that become, if that becomes its own taxing district out there through a jet, the city can't even sign a license without a go on them.
Oh, is that right?
They can.
I don't know if they can override an I D A or a jet.
Becomes, it's no longer any-
It's a taxing district, but I'm not sure you can override the, the state of, the division of liquor controls calling that a high area, I'm not sure they can do that. I know they can do it-
I've, from my conversations with Jackson Township-
Do you think they can?
Understand that under the jet agreement, because of the taxing authority being, it's actually, would be-
The board.
Would be actually likely a part of the city of Kent, city of Kent can actually grant the license.
Okay. Doesn't hurt to look.
I mean, that would also be part of the reason for the hotels on the hill, they're probably going to get those licenses up on top of the hill for the hotels.
Right.
Move forward.
Yeah, I guess basically it's just requesting whether or not you guys want to request a hearing, although we've got any information for any of the stated reasons and revise code, we can ask for it.
Nothing here.
I'll send that down without a request for hearing. And then fiscal officer number eight is just a request for a resolution to certify the lighting districts for the tax year of 2014.
Also move, second, discussion, roll call.
That was Mr. Alena.
I second, yes.
Mr. Alena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And that will conclude the fiscal officer's report for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Flex. I'll cover the administrator sections, Ms. Kimmel was excused for prior commitment. First is administrator number one, this is U.S. Postal Service, it's for the fall newsletter, and essentially to authorize payment from fund zero-one-eight-twenty-six J, an amount not to exceed three thousand dollars for postage for our fall newsletter. Second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Alena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Under administrator number two, we have Pinnacle Press for the printing of fall newsletter, and that is amount not to exceed three thousand dollars from fund zero-one-eight-twenty-six K, and also move on that. Second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Alena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Last item we have, number three is the Worsler Brothers for composting. The resolution is to authorize payment to Worsler Brothers Landscaping by two thousand and fourteen composting, an amount not to exceed two thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents from fund zero-one-eight-twenty-six L. Second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Alena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Haas?
Yes.
That'll conclude the administrator's report, I'm going to turn the fire department over to Chief Snyder.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is the July fourteen, July fourteen, Monday report.
Chief?
Question on here at the end of this. These all reflect since we opened up the new central station, exactly how much is the average response time going down since that station's been open?
Probably, I'm just estimating right now, three to forty seconds, you know, based on our call increasing and based on multiple calls at the same time, you know, so our travel distance has increased, so in other words, if we have a call over our station two's district, and maybe our central station will respond to that, pick it around, we're going to call, so the threes, the fours, that's what we respond down that area, so you have, you still have a longer response time for the hotline stations because we're getting so many mobile calls at the same time. You know, we have three or four calls going on at the same time, and the last month we had nine calls in forty-five minutes. So, you know, when you're dealing with that amount of calls in a short amount of time, you know, your response time are coming from different areas of the township. So, obviously with that, you know, our response time is, it's kind of hard to say exactly. On an average though, with that station we have, I'm looking at about forty, forty-five seconds probably right now.
So, we still have a forty-five second decrease in response time?
Within that district with that station.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Okay.
Item number two is to authorize a purchase and payment from Comtech for the three stations alerting systems, an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second, discussion, Chief Justice clarification, again, because I met with you last week, this has to do with updating the timing really within the stations, is it for the public to understand?
Yeah, there's two, there's two parts, this is two A, Comtech is one of the vendors we're going to be using. Basically, our alerting system alerts the firefighters of the stations, has not been upgraded, never been, much money in those over thirty years, and with the new system we put at the new central station, we're just making sure before we move forward with the other fire stations that the system was capable of doing what we wanted to do, it's, and it is, it's worked out very, very well for us at the central station, so I had Rob Scollish put together a packet regarding the other three stations, what it would cost to do with the other three stations, and to upgrade those to what we currently have, and also would bring in line with using the eight hundred system. Right now, we're not alerting on eight hundred system in the other three stations, we're still using our old UHF radios monitors to do that. This here will bring it up to the, to the county system with the eight hundred like the central station is now. So, you know, we have old speakers from, I had boxes back in the seventies and early eighties, we put up a station for, we wired ourselves, you know, thirty some, forty years ago, so, you know, so it's, it's long overdue.
He actually took the car speakers out of his car.
No, I remember-
From your conversation, you just said it's, it's all compatible now, we're more up to date.
So, this will be all-
Uniform across the, across the board.
So, that's, resolution's two A.
Roll, roll call.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Alena?
Yes.
Then two B would be authorize a purchase and payment from B and H, for speakers, amplifiers, various accessories for that system also. You know, what Mr. Scollish did, he, he went back out and looked at the Comtech system and tried, you know, look at how we can lower that cost overall, twenty-five thousand, which he did by about three or four thousand dollars by going to another vendor and buying some other parts we can still utilize within that system. So, he saved us probably three or four thousand dollars by doing that.
Please, John, go be. I will so move on to B.
I'll second it.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Alena?
Yes.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And it takes us to road department, turn that over to Mr. Iacito.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item number one is the monthly report for July. Do you have any answer, any questions?
Road paving's looking good.
Snyder Road turned out real well, it's all straight and finished. I'm hoping they come back next week, this is a little rare, it's really busy, the weather's slowing everybody down, so maybe once they get in there, we'll be able to do all at once and get done.
Good.
Item number two is a resolution authorized purchase of gas main oil, these will not exceed twenty thousand dollars.
I will so move, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Alena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have to forego the zoning report tonight. Turn that over to Mr. Fall.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, gentlemen. I remember this is our monthly report for July. Not as bad as July.
I see a lot of hand signatures by the city.
That's what I see too. Presidential, for the year, we're at forty-eight now?
Is that nine?
Starts up, sorry, thirty.
Nine for the month, forty for the year. Yet, how, how does that pan out with our developments of Wicker Creek, Saratoga Hills?
Once again, we are, Wicker Creek has-
There's got to be less than a handful left.
I would say less than ten lots left in Wicker Creek. Saratoga Hills probably has, maybe I probably do scatter in the different areas there. There, they've got a couple, three dozen there because they're very price points. Lexington Farms is less than twenty.
The last phase or the existing phase?
Their remaining properties.
Well, there's seven, there's seven that are just, they proceeded work just on seven that developed, and the only ones that are remaining are along Stone Crossing and Pine Bluff. I think there might be one or two up on, I would guess, two dozen in the outside of there.
Now, what's the second, I mean, there's one-
Inter-very, no, nothing else is planted there.
No, but I think they, they originally agreed with the plan of that, there's additional ones that are supposed to go behind there. They haven't maybe submitted a plan for it yet, but-
That, no, they have not submitted, the, what will happen is they submitted back in oh-three, oh-four, oh-five, they submitted a rather large preliminary plat for the entire area, but they only platted up two with Stone Crossing.
Right.
So, anything north of Stone Crossing will have to meet revised zone, and they have not submitted-
Well, the only thing, anything on the other side of that, Danny, we did it through a, an agreement for the larger lots on the backside of Wellington already, that's already done for farms working for it.
Yeah, well, that was already their preliminary plat, right.
That should have-
But they have, but they have, they've got, because it's got to be rezoning now either. Because the zoning change from what was planted, zoning doesn't carry over with preliminary plats.
No, but I think the square footage of that property, we are, we did a minimum, yes, we did, we did the minimum-
Yeah, they showed, they showed fifteen across the, across the order tier, I don't know, let's see that there.
That's correct.
Yeah, they, that, that showed that, and that would, that would reflect in today's current zoning as it is.
Okay.
And we have a, a meeting, there are, let's see, the other active subdivision is Canterbury Creek. And that, that equipped, quite a nice use last year, and there are new homes proceeding in there quite well with several of the builders.
Have you had any contact with, can we develop?
No, I haven't got. Last, last time I talked to them, they were still considering after the first of the year.
As far as for starting the year?
Sorry, beginning to, with their planning requirements outside of that. And we do have a, have tomorrow night's zoning commission meeting, there's an eighteen acre parcel on Mount Pleasant Street. I don't know, you know where the, as it takes the bad earth around Bottling, that is currently zoned rural residential, Skip Ray and his company is coming in to request that to be rezoned to R one. It is completely surrounded by single family homes. This would be R one, those lots would be fifteen thousand square feet, the others surrounding it are in the eight to ten thousand square feet, so this would be a nice subdivision for that area. And Regional Planning Commission did recommend that for approval, and it's eighteen acre, that's where the one large house sits up there, and it's, they're not really been used for farming for any length of time, so, so we'll see how that goes tomorrow, so that would be a new subdivision coming in. And it's deep with Mr. Ray, he wants to get, you know, to be successful in R nine, he wants to keep moving, we're, keep moving on that.
That's what Mr. Sastani about the corner market, can't, have you been approached by anybody?
We have done, long ago, people talked about it, but that's been quiet.
Yeah, we haven't approached by anybody. Well, Danny, is that the one we set down?
That's the title of probably, yeah, there was, you know, we were looking at, but I haven't heard from them in several months. Is there anything going there, potential looking at, single family condominium type development back in there, so nine to ten thousand square foot lots? But again, that's, that's been quiet.
Okay.
Any other questions on the monthly report, though? No. In number, voting number two, we have ten nuisance abatements tonight, most are grass, we have two that are, have accumulation of trash.
I'm going to move on to two A through J. Second, discussion.
Yeah, Danny, I want to have first part, that's what I have to treat the background.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, that had been known up until now, it's also been known.
Yeah, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Alena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Haas?
Yes.
In zoning number three, we have thirty-four payments to be authorized, these are, this is current through last meeting, and once again, these, you know, we have indication that a couple of people have asked for invoices to be sent to them, but these prices have to be certified first, and if not, then they, please move on the tax duplicates, which we can collect all next year.
I'm going to move on to zoning A through A H. Second, discussion. Is there any way we can get like an automatic signer for these things? I know, I know, we just, we've talked about it, but I mean, at one point we had discussed about being able to sign off to the first page and then get some type of stenograph or something to apply signature to, because we end up with two or three per-
Please give us three. Well, if you mean the right next to the one you want.
Yeah.
I don't know, I think we looked at that at one time, didn't we, to see if we could do a, yeah, can I come in and sign all these resolutions and it's just over and over and over, the same thing?
I thought it was pretty much that we could sign-
I thought, yeah.
We could go to like a stenograph.
I thought we looked at that, and I thought it was a stamp issue, I thought we could have stamps made here, because I want one too.
Why don't we make the original signature?
Yeah, so I mean, I'll, I'll double check it, but I thought we'd already looked at that. Let me see if I can get you, let me see if you guys can see this.
Please, please.
All right.
Please. Because I remember, you know, before we were told that we had to sign everybody's checks, and every check they went out of.
Right.
For starting.
Right.
We spent the year till midnight signing checks.
I've got the add bill in the office to keep-
Danny, the short of it is, is outside of working with Eric, if there's some type of piece of equipment we got for, also on the contender.
Well, we're, we're looking at, we're doing a couple of different things with the building process now to how we can, you just tell our own staff, we get it through an email, because right now we run copies of, we're better part of the free world right now, but we're looking at doing a lot of revision on that, and hopefully, or we're aware that will be something we can have a good solid look at, get sprayed out for next season.
Thank you. Last item left.
We need a roll call on that one.
A roll call, I'm sorry, I got so excited about the automatic signer.
Mr. Alena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Thank you. Then, zoning number four, we have some side lot application before us for vacant lots, this is through the County Land Reutilization Corporation's side lot program. Four A is a property located on Middle Branch Avenue Northeast, this was part of their, our demolition program that we went through, through the Hudson Middle Branch.
I'll so move on, zoning four A. Second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Alena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Four B is off of Hollydale, this is a, this is the north half of a vacated street that whoever, the individual who received it through the program and has since abandoned it, has not paid taxes on it, because neighbors simply wanted to increase their yard size, it's half of the, half of public streets that was vacated a few years ago.
I'll so move on to four B. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Alena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And then, four C, there's one that we had looked at back, I believe it was in May, this was one that requested by the city of Kinston for the improvement of their service center on Thirteenth Street. We looked at it back, back then in tablet, we had, I've had some further discussions with them and they still are. Desires to have new slot, it's one of those small little parcels that was part of our demo program on the south side. It's three, it's being right at the service center there.
I'll soon move on. Zoning four C.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hov?
Yes.
That concludes our zoning for the season, gentlemen, thank you very much.
That's gonna take us to our parks department, I'm gonna turn that over to Mr. Steinberg.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number one is the monthly report. As a part of the monthly report, what's not on there is a, is a thank you to Mr. Isina who took griddings as, as they've accumulated from the paving program and smoothed out the paint. Not only a part of our, of the watered diamond community park, but also Alpine Community Park and North Lot, it looks great. And they just put the speed bumps in today, which is going to help a lot of issues we kind of have on North Lot lately exponentially. So Joe's guys did a wonderful job, thank you.
No, thank you. I mean, just as kudos, Joe, again, I know we talked a little earlier, our staff did that apron in and then we're rolling with the grindings. But I do know the residents on the street that brought that up that caused me great, grace of the earth, extremely grateful because it's mostly been a little unstable now that the hot holes are gone.
Relatively. That entrance was terrible. And then we have a problem with the kids' drag racing vehicles, I need to sweep them so. Slow that down, because when we were out there a couple of years, our neighbors did stop me. That's, that was their biggest complaint, it was supposed to be most, they want to move the street.
Item number two is just a reminder for folks, we do have the Fall E-Waste Recycling Week, the week of September twenty-second through twenty-sixth, twenty fourteen. It will be Monday through Friday, seven A to six P, and we invite folks to bring household batteries, cell phones, BlackBerries, telephones, answering machines, keyboards, mice, speakers, et cetera, et cetera. For the E-Waste Recycling. September twenty-second through twenty-sixth, it's Monday through Friday, seven A to six P. I'm sorry? Absolutely.
Is there any PCs out there on that? No, the paths they take of PCs is.
Yeah, the hardboards, or, excuse me. Yeah, the hard drives, all that stuff, we, we have collected and can need to collect, so. A whole bit. We actually took a wooden framed TV in the last time that was about the size of the back end of most cars. The tube was about the size of your cell phones. So it was interesting.
It's cool, Danny.
It was a TV from like, before my time, I'll leave it at that, well, nineteen eighty? At least. At least. Well, in a jealousy loop. Next item, just a reminder.
TV, your screen now is a TV. This is the size of the TV screen I have.
I'm not going. So, Marco Palooza is going to be September the sixth, twenty fourteen, at Schneider Park. It's an event to create awareness about health amendments for the animals in and around the park, responsible ownership, especially in and around the park. And the third arm is obviously a fundraiser for the park. We have several vendors coming out, two vets donating time, services and, and resources to, to help raise money for the dog park. And it's our first one, so hopefully the weather will cooperate a little better than it did in August for us. Item number four is a resolution for the updated fee structure for part shelter in the Diamond Park Community Room, reservation fees and policies.
I also move, on parse four. Discussion. Roll call. Is there anything else you wanted to add to this?
No, we, we've looked at it consistently and I think it's, it's a very fair rate. And the cost it takes us to maintain, upkeep, clean, and then in some cases, or in some more cases, repair. I think this is fair as we can be.
I mean, that's gonna take care of like what I.
Yes. Correct.
Roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hov?
Yes.
Okay, item number five, just an announcement, a brand new event coming to Schneider Park in September for the month of Mondays, beginning on September eighth, running through the fifteenth, twenty-second and twenty-ninth. Only on Mondays from three to six thirty P M. We've twisted the farmer's market just a little bit, we're gonna start a supper market. We are inviting food trucks into vending an open market atmosphere, prepared food. And hopefully we're gonna have some entertainment, which I'm still trying to secure, so I won't guarantee that yet. But come out and enjoy it, get fresh food, plates average between zero and ten dollars. With these food trucks and it's, it's a growing trend in some of the bigger cities that, that really, I think, fits well.
This is, actually, when we started talking, there's one about the farmer's market. While he was there, it was crowded on personal vacation time.
I found this in something.
Nobody, nobody else.
Yeah.
Nobody else owns it or does any of that, like this around here.
Closest one is Kailua Falls.
If we can own this and start, start counting.
When is the, when are you gonna do this?
Uh, Monday, September eighth, Monday, September fifteenth, Monday, September twenty-two, and Monday, September twenty-nine, three to six thirty P. And if it goes well, we're looking to do an entire season long event from May through September twenty fifteen. Okay, so item number six is a resolution for us to be able to apply for the nature works grant program to replace some of the playground and jungle gym equipment over at Alpine Park, which has served itself and the citizens very, very well. But is in desperate need of updating and certainly bringing up to date the ADA codes and things of that nature.
Also move. Discussion. Just clarification, that playground, we're looking at a reposition, so, so that to where the unused bocce courts.
The playground, the playground equipment will be at Alpine to start, it's, it's some of the, it's still outdated, it'll go over there. In particular, the, the five to twelve age range jungle gym equipment. Sitting centrally located, most all of it. Yes, please.
Move the bocce where? Possibly, we talked about over the, over the.
Guess we did.
Yeah. Do that, you better move. I know, I know, because it's with Kip, Kip, all the, you know. Shains. Shade trees. Yeah, shade trees or something.
We certainly, we're certainly happy to look at it and see what we can do.
Roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hov?
Yes.
That concludes parts next, guys.
Thank you. Nothing out of the law director, nothing out of the communications. It's gonna bring us to our portion of the meeting, public speaks. If there's anybody in the crowd that wishes to address the board and trustees, we ask them to state your name and their address for the record and provide you with three, three minutes. Is there anybody in the crowd that wishes to address the board? Gentlemen here in the front, just.
My name is Phil Weaver, I am the business owner of Calvin Adrian, nineteen hundred Woodlawn Avenue, Northwest, Unit B, in Canton. We have been dealing with the adjoining property next to our building with the zoning department. And this has been going on for more than eight years. And this property has almost destroyed our business. We went from more than three hundred fifty thousand a year down to less than eighty last year. And it's come to the point now where what I'm trying to sell business, I actually had to turn the real estate over to the person who financed it, Mrs. Carpenter, they're all here. And, but we have a lady interested in buying the business and the property. And this isn't gonna happen as long as this catastrophe is happening next door. And I've brought you evidence to give to you. This shows how the properties are conjoined. This shows you our property. And this shows you the mess next door.
Is this the property you're speaking up here?
Yes. And all of these trailers are currently in dispute between zoning and between the owner of that building. But this has been going on for eight years, and I am begging for help because this woman is destroying us.
Danny, is it, is this next to the property where last year when I, I think I was out door to door or something in that neighborhood? And you could even see the house from the road, but there was like.
You got the property you were talking about in the south of the.
Uh, so this is immediately to.
It was Golden Con, Golden Con then moved two doors away. But the, the people that own Golden Con that are here actually own the mortgage for that building. And that's the home and titles we're going now.
This, this has been, as you said, one of the most, is the right word, drawn out.
Eight years.
Processes. With this particular resident, we've had, we've had situations where we'll get into court, we'll get orders, we'll get a particular issue taken care of. And as soon as that particular issue is taken care of, here comes another. We've got situations with this particular property owner where I have to be careful with this, but there's always some emergency. It's typically medical, it's typically throwing the person to the mercy of the court kind of stuff. This, I, I totally sympathize with what you're saying.
Sure. Just to tell you, we had a hearing scheduled with the zoning and at the court a few weeks ago. And it had to be continued because the lady said she had a health issue. But the same day, she moved fifteen picnic tables onto the property that obviously were taken from a park somewhere.
Do you have any pictures of that day?
Oh, yeah. Well, I didn't date, I didn't date them, but.
But you can testify to that that day?
She was at the building unloading crap the day that she was dying and couldn't come to the here.
Okay. I know you've been, you're willing to go to court.
We have, we have tried though.
Yeah.
And this has fallen on deaf ears for eight years, I cannot stress that enough. This woman is destroying our business. The property value of the actual property, business value is diminishing. The lady that is going to buy it, Mrs. Lassmore Johnson now, she's under with him.
Sure. When's the next court date, Danny?
Mr. Carter's working with.
Some of the stuff would fall to nuisance.
That's right, out, yes.
Set another hearing.
Some of the stuff would fall to nuisance. Some of the stuff is.
Well, fall is, fall is coming, we're gonna have rodents. It's just the health department.
For this investigation? Wasn't that come under nuisance, some of that? Is that prevent us from additional nuisance abatement?
I, I don't know what you're looking at, Paul, whether.
Look at it, you got asphalt griddings piled up back there.
Piled up asphalt griddings, doesn't it?
You got building materials, you got tarps.
The stuff that's under the tarpt, it's basically a flea market right now.
It's a junk sale, she goes around at night and picks up.
Well, we require that stuff to be stored indoors.
Right.
What stuff are you referring to again?
Show her all of that.
This is all the pictures down there.
We just have abatements on this stuff right now that, that's just as bad as this.
Well, and what's been focused lately is not this stuff, this is, some of this is relatively.
I mean, you've had this stuff abated before the best.
We just did it right now, we just did these.
I don't know what we're talking about with these. You know what's under these tarps, is it just for wear, so to speak, we buy?
Such as you pick up. Personally speaking, I'd rather rebate this stuff and tell, judge, tell me that I can't.
Well, I don't think the judge is gonna tell us we can't.
This is Laura Moore Johnson, she is the lady who is trying to buy the business and the building property, and she has some things to say.
And if you will, please state your full name and current address for our fiscal officer for the record.
Laura Moore Johnson, nineteen hundred Woodlawn Avenue, Northwest, Unit B, in Canton. I have had several prospective brides come in and they refused to book because of the ice storm next door. They all stated they would have booked, they wanted to book there. In fact, the one lady gave us a deposit and then took the deposit, because they have three days, took the deposit back because of that reason, because of the ice storm next door. I was able to obtain a written letter from a bride that just came this past weekend. She wants to have her wedding there, but because of that, that property being the way it is, she does not want to do it.
I can understand why. I'll read this in the record. My name is Lisa Bilby. Bilby, I am very interested in getting married at the Colvinade Room, however. How my glasses there? However, there's a terrible site next door, I do not underline, want my guests to see. I really am satisfied with all the room has to offer, just not what is next door. This is my first and hopefully wedding, and I want it to be the best. My guests should be like, wow, the only thing standing in the way of my decision is what's next door. The wedding packages are, could be the best to offer in the area, if not for next door. Signed, Lisa Bilby, three three zero, four three seven, sixty six sixty four, is the office.
If there's anything that you could do to help us out, we'd rate the.
I'm going, I'm going tomorrow and talk to Paul. And then I, I think what we're gonna have to happen if, if we're gonna get somewhere with this, is we're gonna need testimony like that and from you folks who've been there. Particularly, I mean, if you're seeing this woman who's reporting to the court that she's undergoing, I forget it was, but it was significant, some kind of heart surgery or some kind of, and she's out there that day. And you can testify to that, that'll be helpful. So, do we have contact information for you folks? Okay, yeah, before we see this picture.
That name when she was supposed to go to court and.
You saw that too?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's, I'll give you your contact information and we'll, we'll be in touch.
You can let her respond to that and see if, if we can bait her on that in the meantime.
I'm having a hard time picking and choosing. I think what we're, yeah, we can, we can certainly look at that, and I think that's one of the options we may, we may have to go with. I'm going to tell you now that I have a, as you do, I have a lengthy history with this particular individual. In fact, in my private practice, I had a week long jury trial with her, and it was about stuff. So what I need you to understand is that when we do the typical abatement. Use this as an example, nobody comes to us and says, I can't believe he took that. In this particular situation, these are treasures. These are, these are regarded as valuables with worth that would defy any kind of reasonability. So just be prepared that that's part of what we're dealing with here. That, that I can tell you from my own experience is certain to happen. So.
I believe her to be a hoarder, you know, that type of person.
But if we take this stuff and we remove it, we can put this stuff somewhere and not dispose of it until.
One person, one person at a time.
Well, that's part of what I'm saying with regard to, is that a nuisance abatement then? Because under the strict nuisance abating guidelines, it's, it's, it's not regarded as having value, we wouldn't say it. So that's what, that's what we're going to have to.
Well, I mean, the letter basically explains that you got seven days to remove these items, and we're gonna remove them for you. Right, and that's her choice.
Yeah, I, I'm sure.
What I have a problem with that.
Yeah, let me, let me circle back to Paul and these folks when I get your information, and we can, we can formulate a.
I don't know about them being treasures, but she picks them up at night from yard sales and things being on the purr. And she resells them, there's price tags on them, so how much of a treasure is that?
Well, treasure wasn't my word, that was my.
That's her word.
Complication of how she feels about them. I certainly...
How's it, well, then why should we sell them if they're so...
I don't, yeah, there's a lot of logic here that I can't deny.
This is Patty Carpenter. She is the actual landowner.
Please state your name, name and address for the record.
Patty Carpenter, 1922 Winkle Avenue, Northwest, Canton. As you've already heard the testimonies of our dear friends, the business of this particular property has really affected all of our businesses in the area. And as you know, we do sell treasures and collectibles at our store. We sell, some of our figurines are $10,000. And so many people don't want to come to our area. And they see this and they think, why would I buy a $10,000 figurine in this establishment when there's trash next door? So, and it's just become difficult for all of us. And we don't want to have anyone hindered in their business as long as it doesn't hurt anyone else. And we want to respect her business as well, but it's going to become a problem. I do have an answer for your signature. Are you going to give that to me at the meeting or not?
No, I'd like to hear it now.
It's called the Realtors. Use it as Dot Loop. It's free. You apply for it on your email. And it's a DocuSign. It's free. You just shoot an email to each other. And you go in, you can share the document with everyone that you want to share it with. Some can just view it, some can sign it. If I can have somebody's email, I can forward it to you.
Yeah, absolutely. You can have mine. I'll hear my car.
Okay, yeah, it's called Dot Loop. It's so simple. You one-time register your signature, you certify it, they validate it. You never have to do it again. You click on a checkmark. It signs for you.
That's great.
Hopefully. I'm a Realtor, too.
Hey, it's all this.
This is my mother, Yvonne Carpenter.
You can talk with her. There's, there's microphones in the scene.
Oh, thank you. I drove into Yvonne's parking lot. Two weeks, it was two weeks ago our show. We had a big artist come in, international artist come in for the store. And I thought I needed Yvonne's parking. So I said, Yvonne, we've been paying her $35 to use her parking place for the hall until it got so trashed. So I said, Yvonne, if you'll let us use your parking, I'll give you $100 for the evening. And she keeps telling me she don't have a dollar to even make a phone call with. And, and I was close to her basement door that was open. And even in my car, the mold smell almost suffocated me. I think if the house was checked, it would be condemned. I owned the house before. It was beautiful when she got it. And owned the hall before, and it was beautiful. They kept that up. But Yvonne would do anything, destroy anyone. She actually is an animal, nature. She would bite the heels of her mother. And I saw her tonight out hanging up clothes on clothesline in front of the house that you guys have already seen. She put up clotheslines to hang up this trash that she's trying to sell. And she's got her, Bill can explain this better than I can. She has someone living in the house. They have no water. And no water at all. So I don't know how the guy flushes a toilet. And I offered them water from our business next door. And they were kind enough to go along with it for her to water her plant. She said she couldn't carry the water from her house to water her plants. So I said, you're welcome to use our water. But how do you live in a house? She's only paying, he's paying $300 a month, Bill, am I right?
I don't know that the guy living there is paying anything. But what it is, is she had her utilities all shut off for non-payment. So what she did is she told them that this kid was living in the basement. She put a little twin bed and a little TV, little refrigerator in there. And so this kid was living there, so he got the utilities on his name under percentage of income. So he's paying like $12 a month for electric. She's paying $12 a month for electric and $30 a month for gas, when in reality, nobody really lives there because there is no water to the building.
So this is going to end up happening to go to the county...
It's a disaster.
County Health and Building Department.
Oh, yeah.
Departments of Fort, unfortunately. I mean, I know the property that I referenced in our communication last year, we went out and made it because I was out door to door for an initiative. And going forward, when I was standing on the backside of the property in somebody's driveway looking down in, I was aghast at what was there. But then when we went off of Whipple, there was a little Ford Focus or something that sat there. You know, it looked like it definitely hadn't moved in some period of time. You couldn't even see the house from the road until you went up into the parking lot of the business or the property we're parking by here now toward where we look down in. I know, I know my notes reflect previously talking with Mr. Paul that outside of the hot, high grass and so forth, having seen, you know, groundhog.
We have all kinds of things.
All that, all that type of rodents.
Yeah. But both of those properties actually are probably going to have to be condemned.
And I can tell you, I think actually with respect to the house, I sat as the township representative and as a representative for our board on the county land reutilization board where we had a demo program. This board actually committed $100,000 to the demolition of properties. And there's certain criteria where back taxes, certain... And that one was actually assessed as a, as a prospect. But due to the fact, I think, one, it was current on its tax, current on its taxes, we couldn't touch it. And then, two, I think technically it was still considered structurally...
Yes. Have the taxes current on this property? Well, what we're talking about right now?
Yeah. The Key Bank, I believe, just paid them. But Key Bank paid the taxes off, I think.
Is, is Key Bank on the property?
I don't know if there, if there are a record. But if you look on CJIS, start CJIS, there's pages about this. So, and there, there are two or three open suits between Key Bank and the other.
I asked Yvonne if she'd sell this property back to me so I could renovate it and bring it up to standard. And she said there are too many liens against it. She's got liens on top of liens on top of liens. She's a, she's a brilliant person and a, she outtalks me. I'm not smart enough for her. I, I honestly feel like I'm in a, in the old time cave when I talk to her. Because she knows every one of you that's here, everything you've ever said, everything. So...
Hopefully she's going to watch this YouTube, YouTube video.
I don't, I don't, I don't think I've ever met her.
I can tell you. It's a prize. Wait till you do.
Yeah. Thank you, gentlemen.
I should say, well, on our, on our end, we'll, we'll follow up through...
I'll talk to Paul.
Please try to help us.
Please.
And how soon, when you get there with things, we can send a letter.
By the end of the week.
End of the week?
Yeah.
It'll be at the time.
Yeah.
For the next meeting?
Yep.
Hopefully we'll have something on the meeting. Jennifer, our next meeting?
Which is when?
The 26th.
Oh, but we're always the second and fourth, Tuesday every month, six p.m. Six p.m. Thank you, Johnny, for your question.
Because any notice that we send out, we have to give the property owner a seven-day period window to correct the situation themselves. If they don't, then we would, we would decide whether to abate the situation or not. And once we do that, we go on property.
By abating, you would get rid of it? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I know we do have, we do have a second individual that was wishing to address the board. Sir, if you'll stand up, state your name and your address for the record.
Yes, my name's David Williams, 5981 Whittle Cliff. I was here back in May to discuss the field behind my house. And about three weeks after that, the man came to cut the grass and did the 30-foot intervals. It looked good. He used a big tractor and used a, you know, I guess a regular type of bush hog. Cut down about six inches. Looked nice. The problem I have today is I got a neighbor dumping a lot of debris into that field. Dumped a lot of brush from trees stacked about this high. He dumped a lot of shrubberies. And I'd say approximately 300 so pounds of stone stacked up in the field. They're decorative stones. They were like put-around shrubberies. Like mulch would be put around. Dumped those up and dumped them out in the field. They're stacked up some of that high. And, and I don't think the landowner wants that. I called the zoning, I called here and talked to, I guess administrative or the zoning people. And it's a no trespass, they thought, type of thing. So, and I don't know, what, what do we do? I mean, he's a good neighbor according to your print out here in the little book here. He's cleaning out the debris in his yard. He's putting it in the wrong places.
You know who it is specifically?
I know where he lives, outside me.
Does he know that we have a dump site here that he can take debris and...
Man, I don't know. I don't know. Outside the, I talked to the guy three times. He said 50 words to me the whole time. I have no idea.
The fact that there's a trespassing out there, a neighbor, I mean, really, this is... It would have to be enforced through the sheriff and being caught in this process.
I gotta believe a visit from you might do a whole lot more than the zoning lawyer.
Yeah, I mean, we can talk to him, but unless we have some sort of proof showing him on the property dumping the stuff, then we could go after charging, speaking and charging.
Yeah, but you need to talk to him.
Talking to him, if he knows in his heart that he is the one doing it and you're talking to him.
We need to play for Mr. Curst.
That's true, because he, yeah, because he gave permission to dump it there.
Right.
What if he did?
Yeah, I don't know. I doubt it. I doubt it, but he may have.
It could work with Mr. Corning.
But it's getting about time for the guy to cut the grass again. And I know if he comes back around and sees that, I mean, I cut it anymore. We've been doing this, what, four years, Mr. Geabasis?
Oh, it's been at least...
At least four years on this thing. So I hate for it to be shot down by something like this.
Oh, for maybe five years.
Yeah, it's been a long time. But I did see him put all that debris there, so, you know. And funny thing about it, he came up to me, he said, he asked me about the field, you know. He said, why don't they cut the whole field? And I said, well, we're lucky to get this cut. I said, we need to, you know, take care of it. Then he started dumping stuff over, you know.
He dumped in an area I suppose that was cut?
Yeah. Right, right. I mean, you don't take it over here where it's eight foot high.
You can't say it, yeah, dump it out.
You can see, I walk in my back door and see it, so, you know.
Do we have any, anything else we need to address? Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board regarding any specific matters? Okay, that's going to close out public speech. It's going to take us to concerns of the trustees, Mr. Geabasis. So maybe you can stop the Shiner Road.
Yes, it turned out beautiful.
No.
No.
No. How's the Shiner Road?
Oh, yeah?
What do you, what do you have, the whole school campus? She's, she's called me several times. She's asked for a copy of floodplains, you know, the stuff that we had done the last time we looked at it, when we were looking at maybe digging out something deeper back there and it worked, came back that that was going to work. We looked at it. We spent money there.
Well, the drainage system there, that, we know that the house should have been built there. That was the drainage area for that wall.
Who approved that?
Regional planning ultimately. Don't think you can build a block that big.
Joe, now, we can't figure how that developer, that, we're looking at that...
The storm store right underneath the corner of that house.
Yeah, I mean, I remember this. But, I mean, did regional planning have to approve this or the building department approve this?
Who would approve the building?
What's the quarter of the... What address?
That's right by Sturbridge.
Straight on the corner.
Second, it's the first house east of Nella, is it?
Yes.
Nella, on Snyder Northwest, the south side of it. I'm not sure, 2005.
Got it, boy.
Probably in the perfect form. And she has a walkout basement, which doesn't help matters. She, she, I don't know. Long time, been there 20 something years.
It's been 98, 97.
Longer than that, but I don't remember that.
The county has issues with, issues with building permits. Whether or not it was an unbuildable lot.
Time.
The storm store went under, RPC approves the plans. Conceivable they would prove, well, how would you build over top of a school? It's a county building department, it's a building for this for that stuff, so.
I don't know. How much money do we spend trying to...
We got, I think we have the answer to this. We're not digging it out and do drainage elevations and studies to see if we can do anything with it. Nothing was able to be done. I do, I think the county went out and put a tech basement in their front yard to help catch some of that. That's maintained by some of the county engineers.
Yeah, but a lot of the water's coming from the backside of the development.
It's all coming from the development, is, but that's where it's all...
It's all, it's all...
The water shed shows that's where.
That's what it was all supposed to do, and then they built a hog on it. She's kind of pumping that pipe under her house.
It's pretty good size, 30 inches.
Well, the only thing I'm concerned about is a couple of things. I mean, this poor person over there now, she can't get insurance on a house anymore. We've been in her house in the front.
She, she went out and bought it.
Yeah. She got flooded out again last night. She just had the furnace replaced from the big storms that we had a month or so ago. She just got flooded out again. We're going to end up with a worse situation. We're going to be sitting there with a house and somebody's going to walk away from it. We're going to all be responsible for it all.
Give me the address and everything. I'll, I can check with... I'm just trying to find years on the map.
I don't know. Since the county approved this thing, do we go to the commissioners? Do we go to, who do we go to about this? Should there be a question? Should there be homes on that property?
Why don't we get any of that address? Maybe we can look up the...
I'll try to find all of those planted. See if they, they still have records of the improvement works, the storm store or something like that. We can figure something out on it.
Worst thing that happened is she has a walkout basement. I don't know if you've ever been down.
You have been. I was in it the day that we had a big storm.
Water to get in her, her basement.
But I mean, we're going to be stuck with a house over there that's going to be vacant. It's going to have all kinds of issues, but surrounded by those other homes around it.
I do believe this started 10 years ago, I mean...
Yeah, but if this property...
Then we got some issues.
This property owner walks away, and we're going to have, we're going to have a lot more issues. So I think so we need to start making some contacts in the county to figure out collectively what can be done, whether the property owner can be bought out, the house razed or something, because...
I'll give it to you tomorrow. We'll look at this stuff all...
Yes. Please try to start getting the history of it somehow.
There's a long answer, try.
I think there's several times.
Is there anything else other concern to trustees? Okay, concerns of the fiscal officer. Takes us to the approval events for July 22, 2014. And I will so move discussion, roll call. Mr. Lena?
Yes.
Mr. Geabasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Huggs?
Yes. There is a need for executive session to be driven by resolve by the county of board trustees, start county Ohio to adjourn the executive session at 7:30 p.m. from this regular meeting is authorized under Ohio Rule 121.22G for the purposes of consideration of 1A, appointment of a public employee or official; 1B, employment of a public employee or official; 1F, compensation of a public employee or official; 3, act of the law director of the team council concerning pending or imminent court action.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Lena?
Yes.
Mr. Geabasis?
Yes.
Mr. Huggs?
Yes.